For, um, we have two trustee seats open and also for our budget. So the polls will be open until 9:00 PM and I encourage the community to please go out and vote today while we still can until 9:00 PM. We have just come from executive session. We will return after this. So we have not adjourned from executive session and we will return. I'm gonna start with comments from the board. Cynthia?
Well, I just wanted to give a shout out for anyone who had attended the Tuckahoe High School concert last night. It was absolutely amazing. I mean, the students, as always, did such a great job and I wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Garofy and Ms. Reedy. What a wonderful performance, as always.
Just one quick thank you to all those who supported the sophomore class car wash over the weekend. That's, it's really important for them to help them raise funds for their junior and senior year events, so thank you for those who participated.
Good evening. I don't have any comments.
Okay, thanks. I don't either tonight, so Carl?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. You're welcome. I have some student recognitions that I'd like to share with you. We are approaching the end of the school year and there are many, many opportunities to recognize our students. We have awards nights coming up in all of our schools and a lot of exciting events and I encourage you to be a part of that and I look forward to seeing you there. But tonight, I'd like to recognize a few outstanding students and programs. First, at the Cottle School, we had our annual public library poetry contest winner at the Cottle School. Her name is Ashley Malina. Congratulations to Ashley on her fine writing. At the middle school, Yuri Lee is an award-winning musician. She was featured at the Concordia Conservatory recently and founder of the Music Around Us Project. We're very proud of her. Also, we've had a lot of middle school students attend NISMIA. The numbers keep going up every year, students who decide to challenge themselves with their musical ability. And also, we had a very successful showing at the annual Music in the Parks Festival. So our music department, Ms. Reedy, Mr. Garofy, as well as Mr. Duchateau, brought our students up and we performed extremely well. We took home some first-place honors in both band and chorus and a second-place honor with our strings program and they got excellent ratings and we are very proud. One hundred and seventy-six middle schoolers performed and that's impressive, especially in a school with approximately 260 students. So music is thriving and we're proud of all those middle school students. At the high school, our musical production this past year, "You're a Good Man," Charlie Brown, anyone that got to see it knows it was an outstanding production, but further validation has come from some award nominations. The following Metro Award nominations are for vocal performance by a male actor and that goes to Corey Garcia. Congratulations, Corey. And also, the lighting design for the show goes to our lighting person who's been with us for many years, Andrew Mosher. He does a fantastic job. So congratulations to Dr. Kathy Mosher, who of course oversees the program along with several other teachers and it's outstanding year after year. It deserves the recognition. On the area of athletics, varsity baseball and softball were league champions this season. Congratulations. We're looking forward to an exciting playoff season. Softball will host the opening round of playoffs this Thursday at the high school if you're available. I think the weather looks good. Also, several of our track athletes qualified for league champions. This is a growing program under Coach Toll's and they were very successful. We are proud of those students who competed. And then also, according to our records, Isabella Touche has become the first female golfer to qualify for postseason play. She's an outstanding athlete and all-around fantastic student and we are very proud of Isabella. Congratulations. And that's all I have.
That's great. Isabella could teach me a thing or two, because I just came from my golf lesson, so she could help me out there.
Certainly can.
Thank you, Carl, for recognizing our students tonight. And I also did want to say, I think it's been great that there's been a lot on social media, on Facebook, a lot of student recognition and a lot of what's happening in the schools and it's really been very prominent and I think it's a great way for us to showcase what's happening in our school. So I think that's been great. Okay, did you have anything, Lee?
Yeah, just briefly, I will say we're continuing to gear up for our construction project this summer. Tomorrow, we have our kickoff meeting with the high school, middle school construction contractors for the artificial turf, as well as the security vestibule and other infrastructure in the building. We start that up tomorrow. And on the financial front, we're gearing up for our year-end process and we are having a meeting with our finance committee next week to meet with our external auditor to review what will be required for our audit this summer.
Lee, if I could just add to that, Lee and I will be meeting with all the contractors, our project manager, as well as our architect for a kickoff meeting tomorrow afternoon. That is for the middle high school, middle high school work and the infrastructure and the security vestibule up here. And then at, right now, we're anticipating June 10th, we will make a presentation to the board, just an update on, because the summer, we are ramping up and we're ready to go, so we will give you an update on all the things that are happening and a calendar of events with regards to construction.
Okay, that's great. Okay, I see Catherine's here, Catherine Newman from the PTA.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Catherine Newman, Vice President of the PTA, and just wanted to share with you some of our activities. We wanted to publicly thank all of our teachers for all they do in our schools. We celebrated them at the end of last month with Teacher Appreciation Week, lunches and breakfasts at both buildings and arranged for fun activities, especially at Cottle. The students could show how much they appreciated their teachers all week long. We had some big programs that have wrapped up in the last couple of weeks, including our spring boutique at Cottle, Fun Assemblies by Bubble Mania, Circus Week at Cottle, and our K-8 PTA Dance Recital, which was held this past weekend. We were also excited to welcome new kindergarten families to our district this past Friday. Tomorrow is Middle School Color Wars and it is a little earlier this year due to the construction that will start on the turf. On June 2nd, our Students' Support Committee has joined with the special education staff to put together a team of Tuckahoe Tigers to participate in the Autism Speaks Walk. Anyone looking to join or donate should look for communications upcoming regarding that. June 6th is our volunteer recognition night at the General Sopope Foundation. We hope all of our volunteers will join us. We're gearing up for Field Day at Cottle on June 7th. And also note that week will be our book fair and on Field Day, we will be having the book fair open to family and friends to shop on Friday. We are also holding a principal's coffee on June 13th with Mr. Marash and Mr. Kilgallen at 8:30 AM and then the same program will be repeated at 7:00 PM in the Cottle Auditorium so they can share some of their plans for the upcoming year. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay, this is now, Tuckahoe School Foundation, did you have anything, Rob?
Yeah, just a quick update on that front. The board is current for TSF, the board is currently reviewing the grant submissions and those results should be out in the next week or two. They are also currently reviewing their scholarship applications they receive and those candidates who will be awarded will also be announced beginning of June, second week of June. And lastly, those who may be interested in graduation signs for their Cottle graduates, middle school graduates or high school graduates, the requests to purchase those signs can be made via the TSF Facebook page or their website and they accept payments via PayPal.
Great. Thank you, Rob. Okay, this is now the first recognition of the audience on agenda items, if anyone would like to approach.
Hi, I'm Andrea Ganjemi, second grade teacher at Cottle School. I just wanted to give a shout out. It's Teacher Recognition Week, but we want to recognize everyone at Cottle, so the monitors, the custodians, the aides, the security people. We're just so thankful for all of them and I just wanted to make sure that we recognize them.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Number one, approve the consent agenda. Okay, is there a motion? Rob, second. Pete, discussion?
Just on item number eight, if Lee can just maybe provide a little background on the establishing of a sub-fund, just a little bit of the details around that, because it is another reserve potentially that we might create.
Exactly. So finally, this year, after many years of lobbying by various education groups and business official groups in New York State, the New York State Legislature in Albany approved a reserve fund that could be used by school districts to hold monies in the event for fluctuations in the TRS pension contribution. So this fund is allowed to be established by board resolution and it has to be a sub-fund of the ERS, the Employee Retirement System Reserve Fund, which we established two years ago. So since we have that reserve fund established, we can now establish this second reserve fund for TRS, Teachers Retirement System contributions toward their pension. Once it's set up, it can be funded and spent and utilized only by board resolution again. So what I suggest we do is set up the fund and then determine throughout the year whether there are monies available that we may use to fund it or move between funds if we so deem that some funds no longer need the amount of funds they have. We can move between funds with board resolution as well. And then, this could be used in future years if TRS contribution rates rise, we can use the reserve fund to smooth out some of those increases in contributions and help ease up on the tax levy increases.
Rob, I'll just add to that, the contribution rate fluctuates and depending on the economy, the stock market, other variables, it's been as high, Lee, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's been as high as 22%, 23%. It's been as low as, you know, single digits. So with that fluctuation, if we're able to set up a fund at some point in the future, we can smooth that out and when it spikes, it would not be as much of an impact to the school district. So I think it's a very good thing to do. Lee, is it correct to say that right now, we're not recommending any funds be allocated? We're just establishing-
Correct.
-the fund itself?
Right.
Then you did say that we, once the money's in there, it can be transferred out if, for another reason or into another reserve?
Once the money is in there, it's to be used for TRS pension. Some other funds are allowed to be moved between in and out, but this one is just for-
So once the money's in there, then that's what it's for?
And there are maximum limits that are set by the state.
Okay. All right. I mean, I think it makes perfect fiscal sense. I don't know what took so long for the state to allow it when we have it for the ERS and that was, that's been for a few years now, so it just, really just made no sense and I think this makes perfect fiscal sense and it just helps planning much easier for us for when, as Carl said, there's those fluctuations and increases that are hard to plan for, so I think it makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of consent agenda? Okay, we'll move on to business of the board. Number one is first reading of a policy. This is for Amendment of Policy 1500, Use of School Facilities. Do we want to have some discussion on that? We now have the revised amended and did Lauren, she's not here, has that been posted on our web? If it's not posted, it will be posted today?
Yes. Yes. Well, if I could start just by giving credit where credit is due, both Cynthia Tate and Peter Casson really took the lead with this, did the bulk of the work on policy revision. Lee and I supported the work, but certainly, so Peter and Cynthia, I'd love to kind of turn it over to you if you want to explain some of the revisions that we've made and changes and-
Sure.
Do you need a copy to follow along with?
I probably could do it from memory. So the policy is mainly the same. It hasn't changed that much. We just edited some clarification in some areas and then made some procedural changes and upgraded it a little bit. The principal change or amendment is we defined more clearly which types of organizations can use our facilities for free. It's always been that we allowed organizations, particularly those that are for our kids and based in our community, to use the facilities generally for free, but we just felt it would be good to define those organizations a little more about what constitutes an organization that can use for free. We didn't specify the organizations, we just defined them. When Michelle reads it, I guess it'll come, you can hear that when she reads it. So that was probably the biggest change and then we made some-
No, we're not reading it.
Oh, you're not reading it? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I thought you were reading the entire-
It'll take 30 minutes.
All right, good. I'm glad to hear that. That's good. I'm glad to hear that. So I couldn't, if you had a copy, I could read those, just those stipulations if anybody's interested, but it's on the website, but basically, it's, from memory, it's basically we just defined organizations that are for our district kids only, primarily, I should say, organizations that foster community service, leadership, athletic organizations that cooperate with our, with our district programs. I think that was pretty much it, right? I'm kind of doing the memory.
Yeah, and then the only other thing was something to do with like electronic when you're asking.
Requests.
Yeah, requests.
Right.
Moving to electronic versus the paper.
Right. Clarify the procedure for applications, being electronic versus paper. And we talked about providing proof of nonprofit status if that's applicable. And that was pretty much it. That was kind of the nuts and bolts and the rest of it was just some, kind of window dressing, if you will, just, we'll take in the opportunity, our attorney, to clean up some of the language and make it a little bit more efficient.
Okay. And we don't read it, but that's why we put it up three times, so that it's open for the public-
To discuss.
-for comment.
Correct, yeah.
If they have, read it and if there's anything that anyone wants to or come to our meeting at the next reading and discuss. That's why we leave it open that way, so we can do that at our next meeting.
And the other change we made too is just to equalize the start times on the weekends of the fields.
Oh, that's right.
We had some policy about the start times on the weekends for the high school field, but it didn't apply to the, to the Cottle field, so we just leveled that out and made it apply to both. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Number two, accept a donation. Whereas the Tuckahoe Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made and whereas the district would like to accept such donation, it is hereby resolved that the district shall accept the donation from Ellen Evan in the amount, from Ellen Evan in the amount of $300 to replenish the Evan Memorial Scholarship Fund. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Pete, discussion?
I would just thank Ellen Evgen for continuing to donate to the school and the district.
All in favor? Number three, approve Westchester-Putnam School Board Association Budget and Officers' Board of Directors. Resolve to approve the 2019-20 WPSBA Slate of Officers Board of Directors and the 2019-20 budget and authorize the board president to sign the WPSBA Annual Meeting ballot as attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia, discussion? All in favor? Number four, approve an agreement, resolve to approve an agreement for homebound instruction services with ABC tutoring for the period of July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020 at a rate of $60 an hour not to exceed $30,000. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Pete, discussion?
Is this tutoring for anything specific or is it just generic?
These are tutoring services for students who may be at homebound, Peter, for various reasons, could be, you know, an injury or something like that.
Got it.
The district's required to provide two hours per day in lieu of, and Dr. McDonald, do you want to clarify any of this?
Yeah, this typically shows up on your reorganization meeting in July and the reason why we asked for it to be early is because we have grant-funded some work with ESL students for this summer and one of the things that we're offering to students that the teachers identify would be helpful is smaller group with, with an instructor more, as opposed to a program we're also running under a grant, where it's more of a play-based, let's do conversational pieces. We have some students they identify that are higher in their English language, so they need a different kind of experience, so we'll use some grant money this summer. That starts July 1st. Your meeting's not till after July 1st and their tutors are going to help us with that aspect, so we just needed to get the contract done earlier.
Great.
Excellent.
Wonderful. Thank you. All in favor? Number five, approve Facilities License and Operating Agreement. It resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District approves and ratifies the agreement with Tuckahoe After School Care, hereinafter referred to as TASK, dated May 21st, 2019, through which TASK will be granted a license to utilize a portion of the Tuckahoe Middle School, High School from July 1st, 2019 through August 1st, 2019 for the sum of $5,000. And be it further resolved that the Superintendent of Schools is hereby authorized and empowered to execute the agreement with TASK and be it further resolved that Superintendent of Schools and school district officers and administrators are authorized and directed to take all actions necessary to affect the purposes and to cause compliance with the agreement. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Pete, discussion?
This is simply to outline the terms of our building use for the TASK program, which is running a scaled-back version of their typical summer program because there'll be construction at Cottle, so they are going to be located here in the middle high school building along with the school programs and some other programs, but we've managed to fit everyone in and I think we have a good plan for the summer.
Right. And we did, that's an amended amount because of, they have a reduced program and because of the lack, you know, they can't use all these, all these-
Facilities.
Correct.
And it's limited this year, so we did come up with a reduced fee.
Reduced fee, yes.
Okay. I'm just glad to hear that, that they're going to be able to have the program here and that we're able to, everybody work together in order to make that happen this summer because I didn't, I do know that that was difficult.
Yeah, it definitely was. As a member of the TASK board, they're grateful and appreciate your willingness to work with them and it certainly helps, being that they have to run a reduced program, just from a budgetary standpoint in order to make it profitable and not run in the rent. So, thank you.
Our pleasure. Serves the children.
All in favor? Number six, approve a side letter. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves a side letter of agreement dated May 21st, 2019, binding between the district and the Tuckahoe Teachers Association and authorizes the superintendent to execute the same. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Number seven, approve a side letter. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves a side letter of agreement dated May 20th, 2019, binding between the district and the Tuckahoe Teachers Association and authorizes the superintendent to execute the same. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia, discussion? All in favor? Number eight, approve a photographer. Resolve to appoint Edgar Pinata of Ryad photo for photography services for the 2018-19 school year at a rate of $50 per athletic event not to exceed $750. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Pete, discussion? All in favor? Okay, we'll move on to personnel. Accept personnel recommendations. Resolve to accept personnel action items A through L as outlined below. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion? Carl, did you want to comment on it? I mean, there's a whole series of appointments for coaching appointments and we do have two teacher appointments, but they are, they're full-time appointments, they're not new hires. So they're just-
I'll just comment on one, we have one employee who's resigning. I think it's appropriate to mention that she served us for 18 years, Ms. Kim Cook. She worked in our payroll department. She is leaving for a promotion and a wonderful career opportunity for her. We wish her well. She served this district well and we certainly appreciate Ms. Cook. She's helping us transition and Ms. Lou is close to, I think, making a recommendation to the board, probably the next meeting, to have a replacement for Ms. Cook. So I appreciate your expediting that, Lee.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, this is now the second recognition of the audience. If anyone would like to recognize the board? Okay. All right, we are gonna now, we will now adjourn the meeting because we are going back to executive session. We will return this evening about-
10.
10 o'clock, maybe a little bit before. You think 10 o'clock?
It's hard to predict.
9:45, 10 o'clock?
The earliest 9:45, the latest 10:50.
Right. With the results from today's election. Okay, thank you. Okay. We are going to read off the results. Peter Casson was our chair, our election chair? Is that what, is that your-
Vote chair?
Vote chair? So he'll read the results and then we'll motion to accept the results.
Okay. Resolve to accept the results of the school budget vote and trustee election. For the budget, yes, 530. No, 227. For Board of Education, Therese Gardier, 394 votes. Donna Martuge, 222 votes. Robert Seifer, 318 votes. Laura Banky, 458 votes.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the results? Pete, second. Rob, all in favor? Okay. I'd like to just take a minute to thank the community for coming out to support our budget. That's excellent news for our children and we really thank the community for supporting all that we do here for our students. I'd also like to thank the four candidates who came out because I can sincerely say, having been there, putting yourself out there and wanting to do this work for the kids, because that's what it's all about, I want to thank you because it is not easy. I want to thank Rob for his years of service and Dodge also, who did not seek reelection this year because they have served with us for three years and it's a tremendous amount of work and we thank you for your service. It looks like our new two trustees are Laura Banky and Therese Gardier. Congratulations to you and also thank you to Donna for putting herself out there too. It really is a tremendous effort to do that and I, and I thank everybody. I want to thank the community for participating because it is those who vote who have a say in how your school is governed and how we go forward, so I want to thank the community for coming out tonight. And we will return on June 3rd for our next board workshop and we will see you then. Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.